I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have the roll call?
Counselor Lambert.
President.
Counselor Roderick.
Here.
Counselor Rudolph.
Present.
Counselor Durfee.
Here.
Counselor Leonard.
Here.
Counselor Costa.
Here.
All present.
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the approval of the minutes from November 24th, regular council meeting, approval of executive session meeting minutes November 24th, continued to December 2nd, 2018, approval of minutes from November 10th, regular council meeting, Counselor Roderick, Lambert, and Leonard abstaining, not in attendance, approval of amendments from October 27th, regular council meeting, the Counselors Roderick, Lambert, and Leonard abstain, not in attendance, receiving minutes from the following boards and commissions, Recreation Commission 2, Fogland Beach Oversight 3, and the Arts Commission. Correspondence received and filed, received from Steven Rice Landfill Recycling Committee regarding Tibbetts Ranger School Honors as top recycling school in state. And that's tonight's consent agenda. Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we insert some interviews for various boards and commissions in front of Item 4B.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, we're going to do interviews tonight for a few positions. We're going to start with Housing Authority and Michael Burke.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Any questions from any members of the council?
Mr. Burke, I'd just like to know, what do you think you can bring to the Housing Authority?
Well, one, I've obviously been a member of the school committee for a while, so I understand town government pretty well intimidated. I also sit on, as part of my work life, several different housing-related groups, mostly around homelessness, so I know a lot of the people who are involved in the housing field in Rhode Island. I think that's a plus. I'm somewhat familiar with the roles of the housing authorities. I certainly would have to bone up on that a bit. Look to you, Mr. Roderick, for assistance with that perhaps. And, you know, I bring a dedication to any position that I come into, so I would certainly give it my all.
Thank you.
I have no other questions.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Burke? Thank you, Mr. Burke. Interviewing for the Library Board of Trustees, Maureen Monarch. Not here, okay. We're talking to the Juvenile Hearing Board, Cynthia Costa. Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Any members of the council have any questions for Mrs. Costa?
I would ask why she's interested in the Juvenile Hearing Board and what she thinks she can bring to the board.
Well, basically, what I meant for us is, over the years, I have, number one, a mother of six and now a grandmother of 11, so dealing with young people, you always want, I just always feel like to be objective and be compassionate in making decisions and, you know, any problems that they may have, and I just feel that I could deal with helping the young people not to be so judgmental on them for the first-time offenders and it's they being brought before us for any, you know, discipline or decision to make, community service or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the council have any questions for Mrs. Costa?
I'm going to ask this question of everybody, but have you looked at the ordinance?
I really haven't, Louise, because I don't, I had, well, I'd asked Campbell if he had, but he didn't have it at the time, so I haven't. I will review that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
John Dupont, Jr.
Sometimes it's pronounced Day-Pont.
I'll pronounce it any way you'd like it pronounced.
No, not this way.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. Any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Dupont?
I will ask the same question again. Why are you interested in the board and what do you think you bring to membership on the board?
Well, when I first heard, I think one of the police officers appeared before the council and made a recommendation that there be such a board in the town. This exists in, I think, over, what, 29 other communities, so maybe about, anyway, I thought it was a great idea. The more I found out about it, the greater I thought it was. To, first of all, having been involved in bringing up two children, mainly done by my wife, but you get a lot of experience there with youth. They're involved in social programs at school and athletics, and my sense of young people is, they're great. And when they mess up, we should help them stop the messing up without creating, as simple a process as possible, a process that's effective but not traumatic, and I think sometimes appearing in formal hearings for young people, who generally speaking are very innocent of behavior, because we're dealing here with juveniles that have admitted what they've done, and it's not felony offenses, so all of that. So I just think it's a great forum to have or procedure to have, and it will give the young people a chance to correct themselves, and the objective being that that's it. They realize that this is not, get on the right path, that's the way to handle your life if you want to succeed, and everyone does have an opportunity to succeed if they get on the right path early in their lives. So I have a lot of faith in young kids and hate to see them mess up, but for these kinds of offenses, I think this procedure is very good.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Dupont, have you read the ordinance?
Part of it, yeah. For me, isn't it?
What part did you read?
Well, the beginning part. Do you want me to cite some?
No, 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 I just wanted to know, have you read it?
I know the, yeah, I was aware of, in talking to people about the, what it provides, I have to say, I haven't read line for line when you say, "Read the ordinance," but, yeah, I'm familiar with.
I promise not to give you a test on it, I just hope you've read it.
But I, well, when you ask if you've read the ordinance, I mean, I want to tell you, I haven't read it line for line, but I've read through it, yes, very quickly, and I'm familiar with the procedure, and I think it's a very well-structured procedure. I don't think it is letting anyone feel that they're not answerable for what they do. Accountability is very important, I think this procedure will provide for that, so I am familiar with the ordinance, Madam Counselor.
I have another question for you. What kind of a, we have five members to appoint, plus two.
Right.
What kind of a mix do you foresee we should appoint on this? What kind of a mix of folks?
Well, I think diverse, for just about everything these days, and it is best, and I want to say that my main concern, frankly, in filling out that application was not to feel that I had more qualifications, it was to make sure that they did have, you know, people, and if there are others that, I'm glad to accept the fact that there may be others that may be more qualified, but I think it ought to be a cross-section of the community.
Mr. Dupont, how do you feel your legal background will help?
Well, I don't, see, that's the tricky part of it. I don't think my legal background, in fact, I think the chief made the con, I think there's concern about not having lawyers, that is a conflict of interest. My legal background, as a matter of fact, was international business law with the government, so it doesn't really prepare me much for anything in local government, and that's an advantage, I feel, but, no, it wouldn't be, you know, in the military, I had to say, maybe I picked up a little experience in having been involved, well, maybe I shouldn't say that, with court martial, before I became a lawyer, but it was, but on boards that were concerned about, very often minor offenses, that really didn't call for much formality, but you had to go through the formality, and I felt that very often there was harm done to some of these young GIs going through that process when it was a very minor offense. We, you know, there are some very strict, if a general wants, passes orders that he wants certain things dealt with, you can be having formal procedures for things that are not great, and I kind of see that experience, having seen the negative side of too much formality, although there are also, in the military, there are very good procedures for, that aren't so formal, so, but it wouldn't be my legal background that would be helpful to you. I think the biggest thing is bringing, having been part of bringing up two young kids and meeting their friends during the high school years, that's what we're talking about here, I think mainly junior high, and boy, I had a very positive experience with, we're still in touch with them today. It's in the Washington area, but we're in touch with them, and I just like to see kids get on the right path.
Mr. Dupont, in your experience with your own children, have you ever been involved in any community-based youth activities?
I didn't have much time for it, other than on weekends, no, my wife did, but I, community, it was, my son became a pretty good soccer player, and that tied up all my weekends, traveling around the Washington area to soccer tournaments and things, but that, that experience, I think, was very helpful because it was very organized and you get to meet a lot of, you know, kids, many of whom are, at times, getting in a little trouble, and you always felt a sense of, you know, trying to help them avoid deeper problems. But it's a great idea.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Glad to see the time has moved.
You may not say that, they may need a budget.
This is actually, from a financial standpoint, I think it saves money, right? I can get it in the court system, yes.
Good evening. Good evening. Yes, I have read.
And I will ask my question, two questions, actually. Why are you interested in the board and what do you bring, what do you think you will bring to the board?
I've always been interested in youth activities. I've been involved in civic activities and volunteer activities all my adult life. I've been involved in Boy Scouts, for example, for close to 60 years, and I still conduct evil promotion boards for an arrogant council. Once every few weeks, I hold a promotion board for them. I enjoy talking to youths who are willing to do something good instead of what you read about in newspapers all the time, you only read the bad stuff, so it makes me feel good, as well as, I think, contributing to the community by doing something. I get as much out of it as I give to it, and I think this is an example of something that needs to be done.
I think, Louise, your question was.
That's already answered.
I think mine was, too.
Yes.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Dupont? Thank you for coming. Mary Lou Pro.
Good evening, and thank you for coming, and I'll ask you the first of the, when this becomes real pro forma questions, why are you interested in the board and why, what do you think you will contribute to it? I feel, I feel that at this point, I should come up with some new questions because the latter people haven't been.
Go ahead, go for it, no one.
But I don't know what, we'll stick with what we have.
Well, basically, it's a lot of the reasons that have already been said prior to my coming here. I kept saying, gee, they're taking all my answers, but as you can tell from my application, I have been a resident here in Tibbetts for 41 years, coached many of the high school sports, a lot of the town sports, been very involved with the Girl Scouts, with the Boosters Club. I have three children who have gone through the system, two now in college, one already graduated, and I've always looked to see that this kind of a board should have been made a long time ago, because I feel there are a lot of good kids out there who sometimes make bad decisions, and this would be a great intermediary board between them going further in the wrong direction.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll take a look at your resume and your qualifications, which certainly lend themselves, certainly to a board of this type. You said, "I have also worked as a youth minister and advisor to youth," and where did that take place?
Okay, for 12 years, I was with Holy Ghost Church as their business manager and ran a lot of the youth activities that did go on there from 1982 to 95, and currently, I'm at St. Barnabas in Portsmouth as the business administrator, and, I mean, we are just inundated with youth activities everywhere.
And have you read the ordinance? You didn't answer that question.
If you mean by the ordinance, what was.
Ordinance.
What was put in the little paragraph that mentioned what this board was going to be, a three-year appointment?
Yeah, and actually, this, let me, even get a copy of this, too, in the Town Clerk, sort of lays out what the board is, what they would do, how they would conduct themselves. It's a rather, and there's a few pages with regard to what this, what the purpose of this is. Town Clerk, I'm sure, has a copy of it.
I do have some.
And you really should read it.
My questions are certainly answered within the qualifications.
Any questions? Not? Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Sina Franklin?
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you, thank you for showing your interest in this important board, and again, if you could just briefly summarize why you're interested in serving on this board and what capabilities and talents you would bring to the board?
Okay, sure. I'm interested because we've lived in Tibbetts now for, oh, I guess, almost seven years, and it's time to give back to the community, it's really that simple. I think what I bring is a lot, my background is really, as you can see, I'm a licensed social worker, I've worked with kids and adolescents and families for years. I have been an administrator for a long time now, so I haven't done clinical work, although I think I know kids and I think I know families, and my perspective is that when kids mess up, as somebody had referred to it before, sometimes it is, you know, the family needs strengthening, sometimes it's choices of the kids, and I think I have a fairly good understanding of that. As well, I'm interested because I'm a parent, and I have a 13-year-old who, thank God, has not messed up yet, but I think I can bring, I bring that interest and that commitment because of her as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I know you have the ordinance before you, don't you? Have you read the ordinance?
I have not, and that is really unlike me. Had I known there was something like that, I would have absolutely read it. I tend to be extremely thorough, so, no, I didn't know that.
Then I'll ask my second question, which is, sitting where we're sitting, we have a number of really excellent candidates, what kind of a mix would you see that we should have on this board?
I would think you would want some diversity in terms of people's life experiences, people's professional background, people's interests, I would think you'd want some parents, you know, you might want some professionals, I would just think you'd want a real mix of people. Newcomers to the community, you know, I don't know the kids, to be quite honest, I don't know the families, you know, I think that's, that's good, because I'm not biased, but, you know, somebody else might find that as a negative, but I would think you'd want a mix, people who are really committed to the community and they've been here forever, and then folks like me, cockney baggers.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Franklin, have you been involved in any community-based youth activities wherever you've lived in the past or in the town now?
Not necessarily, I've been more involved in mixed activities, and we used to live in Milford, Mass, and Marnie was quite young then, so we moved here when she was in second grade, so we didn't have that opportunity as much, so the stuff I did, and I was involved with, I was involved in community theater and them kids as well, as part of that, so that was some of the activities in Massachusetts, and then here, I'm on our temple board and my daughter's involved in a youth group through them, so, and the stuff that we, she's never been into sports or any of that kind of stuff, so I have not been involved in that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Franklin, what do you think the town needs from a juvenile board?
Well, not having read the ordinance, but my, my understanding of that, I would think you would want dedicated folks who could help come up with options when kids have gone down the wrong path, and I would think you would want a group who could also advocate for maybe some activities for youth that might help them find alternatives to going down the wrong path, and really maybe be a voice to some of the kids as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eugene Repose.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Repose. Again, thank you for showing your interest in this important activity, and I'll leave with my two questions. Why are you interested in serving on the board and what talents and capabilities do you think you will be able to contribute to the activity of the board?
Well, I'd like to bring to the talents, to the youth, actually, just try to steer them in the right direction and help them along. As far as what I've been involved with, I was also sat on the community service board of the, advisory board of the high school, and we entered into that, so we drew up some a lot of rules and where the students had to do community service for the town of Tibbetts through the high school, and they're still active with it. We've worked along with the coordinator there, which is, I believe, Rebecca Ewell, like today, but back then, with some others, different community service advisor, so we had worked with them. As far as the youth in town, I was vice president of Tibbetts Law and Order, been active with my kids, past president of Tibbetts High School Athletic Boosters for two years, I'm still active with them, I still, after my kids left our school system, I did get involved with the classes over there, and I brought the circus in town, some of the members know, for the school, children of the high school for the classes. Still a president, well, treasurer of the Tibbetts Lions Club, so I'm still getting active with them, retired firefighter for 30 years in the town of Tibbetts in here, been active for many years, and still active.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have to ask my question?
No, I haven't. That should be my first remark.
Okay. I'll pass then.
I'm all set.
Eugene, thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You still have one more round of interviews to do at a later date before appointing that board, so you won't hear from us anytime, you know, within the next couple of weeks, so be patient, we will get that board up and functioning. I thank you all for coming this evening, and you will hear from us. Moving on, we're moving to a public hearing. We proposed the adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 22, formalize and elaborate on existing practices for entertainment for business establishment, and for anti-for-money-making practices continued from November 24th.
Mr. President, there was a resignation of Thomas Parker, did you want to handle that? It's at the end of the appointment notice.
We will handle the resignation when we get to that part of the agenda. We just wanted, we took the interviews out of order.
Let's go with the other side, that the public hearing for the entertainment license issues be postponed until the first meeting in February. We've been somewhat occupied by various litigation matters and whatnot, and we're trying to do a comprehensive rewrite to deal with the entertainment issues.
Do you want to continue the public hearing? I think if we, if we don't, we have to.
We'd have to re-advertise it.
We'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to the first meeting in February.
February 9th? The 9th.
The 9th, February 9th. We have a motion to continue to February 9th.
Seconded.
Seconded. Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. The next public hearing is a proposed annual review and amendment to various fees, fines, and permit costs as authorized by ordinance and previous step forth in code, continued from November 24th.
I was going to say that I would make a motion to do the same thing with this list, I don't want to make an appropriate Christmas gift, and if we could handle it after the first of the year, I think everybody would appreciate it.
Also, it is incomplete, so it does make sense to continue it, and I think February
Mr. President, it's almost, it's in the council as to what date you want to continue it. However, I'd like to request that you do continue it, it's not really complete, there have been some changes with some of the rescue charges, as we've been working on it, we're trying to get a comprehensive list of everything here. However, we wanted to get it out in front of you and the people, if you want to take the time tonight to discuss it and then continue it, so that you're not acting on it or just continue the whole thing, obviously, that's up to you, and whatever date you want to continue it to, January or February.
Is there anyone here from the public wishing to be heard on this matter? On the fee schedule?
I will make a motion that we continue it to the first meeting in February.
February 9th.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second, to continue the fee schedule till, the ordinance. We have a motion and a second to continue the fee schedule till the ordinance amendments to February 9th. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is, is, is there someone who'll be making recommendations as to how these fees will be handled?
Yes, well, at the moment, many of those things were changed last year, so that I make glasses, where there's some time in the far right-hand column, that's a recommendation for a change. But we put it in less fashion of the chart, so that's just that point, so if any of the councilors or the public has suggestions that they want to see things go up or down, there'd be an easy way to reconcile it. And that's one reason we want to continue it. At the moment, we just have a small amount of them that we have listed.
Could I make a suggestion to the town clerk that the emissions on this list, or like the planning board, the fire chief, just makes, and the harbor of the mooring fees, to see if there's any change, just make sure they know the timetable and to get their recommendations to the council or to the town clerk. Right, yeah, true.
Okay, I think their recommendations are going through the administrative of certain ways.
That's, oh, I'm sorry. There you go. That's fine. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue to February 9th. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? In unanimous. Sitting as a board of license commissioners, we have a request for late renewals of annual holiday licenses, subject to meeting all legal requirements, and they are for Auto Gallery, Duran's Kawasaki Motorsport, Tiffany Page Jewelry, Envy Gymnastics, and Gallery Four.
I so move, Mr. President.
Subject to all legal requirements, if any?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to all the licenses, the late applications for holiday licenses as listed. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous.
Can I ask, what does that mean, a holiday license? They obviously wouldn't be open on Christmas.
Because they can't open on holidays, like at school and Christmas.
Oh, good for anyone.
It should be the Sunday sales, the Sunday license, and the state changed it, and now it's just holiday.
Next matter is Bay Street Properties, through businesses, Seabreeze Restaurant requests permission to remain open until 2:00 on New Year's Eve, subject to meeting council restrictions. This is continued from the November 24th meeting. Chief? You know, this establishment's made this request in the past, and we've put certain restrictions on what they're allowed to do in that time?
Let's see, I'd like to know if we have any live entertainment. I mean, first question, I want to see if they had, if they proposed that.
Are there, are there individuals from Seabreeze Restaurant here tonight? Is anyone here representing Seabreeze? Okay, and what, what are your questions? Entertainment?
Entertainment, any live entertainment.
Okay.
I'd like to ascertain if they're also selling any type of tickets.
Like admission tickets?
Yes.
In the past, haven't we allowed them to stay open, but they couldn't sell alcohol after 1:00? Or we allowed them to stay open until 2:00, so the patrons could have a little time before they left? Did, did you want to place that restriction in?
I think it's a good idea to have a serving time, that they stop serving at 1:00, quarter past 1:00.
Mr. President?
Any other restrictions, chief?
We did speak with the owner, she did say she was going to be here tonight, but I guess she wasn't. The last time you did put a restriction, though, I believe a motion had been made, and we charged them $100, and, I'm sorry, and Mr. Costa had amended it, so that if there was no problem, you returned it, I guess, police officer returned the $100.
I didn't know.
It was in 2006. It was too late in 2007.
I wasn't aware of any funds being returned.
Okay, well, it wasn't even where we had put a fee on that, but I, I just want to make sure that if we do grant this, that we're going to do it under whatever restrictions you feel are necessary for the, you know, for law enforcement, and that's why I want to address those issues, so we contact them. Your, your concerns are, well, they have, they, they have an entertainment license, don't they? So...
If they have a live entertainment, they're selling tickets, and they have a certain number of patrons they expected to have there. I may even look into having a police officer there, something of that restriction.
Anybody else have any comments on? Is that the reason for your concern about live entertainment tickets is?
At the end of the night, it would tend to be, it's tough to get persons out of the place if they're, they're lingering around, one more drink, one more song, I'd like to be able to control it at the end of the night, that's all.
Okay. I'm inclined to make a motion that it be granted, subject to, one, that they stop serving liquor at 1:00, and that, two, the live entertainment stop at 1:00. And, three, I would, that's not really, it's really a recommendation that they, they clear any other issues with the police chief that they may have. That the police may have. That the police may have.
I would like to make a recommendation that it be a requirement that they have a police officer on duty.
I'll accept that as an amendment to my, yep, as a motion. We'll make that as a third item.
How much would that cost?
It's a, it's a four-hour minimum, it's $23 now, about $150.
Do we require that of other people that have live entertainment?
It depends on the number of persons that will have an establishment.
But the establishment should have a, a limit based on the fire.
Are we talking about for that particular evening?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question. I, I think if, if we have a large number of people there, I would be, I would feel much more comfortable having a police officer there to maintain the crowd.
What is the capacity? I, I think, I think we have to, you know, understand what the capacity of a place is, you know.
We do have a hall next door, that they do have a larger eating area.
Yeah.
Well, unless they've had a history of some problem, it would seem to, you know, I know where the Seabreeze is, I simply assumed that they were making this request so that they could compete with the business in Fall River and the Portuguese clubs in Fall River. I, I don't know if that's the answer, but it seemed to me, a small club like this, you tag on $135 for a police officer, there's no purpose in staying open another hour.
I would agree with Mr. Lambert. As a matter of fact, this place has been open until 2:00 in the morning on many New Year's Eves, I recall, being around here for over 12 years. I would say that that's a unnecessary financial, financial burden.
My understanding of them wanting to stay open until 2:00 AM is so the patrons have a little bit of time before they have to get in their car and drive, rather than, you know, partying until midnight and have to be out of there at 1:00. The 2:00 gives them two hours after the, the New Year's hour, when everybody is celebrated, and it allows some of the alcohol to, even system before they...
From what I remember from last year, that they kind of had, like, food, you know, after the, so that people could eat.
Like, like breakfast or something, so they have something to eat before they left.
Well, that's fine with me, if, my only concern would be adding $135. A place like that doesn't make $135 an hour. They'd be lucky if they make that in the night.
Well, wait a minute, it just seems to be a few, few things we don't know about, the live entertainment, if they're going to have that, if...
I'm sure they will.
I'm sure they're going to have something.
Maybe spinning records, maybe. Re-calLED.
You had mentioned...
The junkies.
Chief, you had mentioned that the restaurant has a separate room, did you?
It's a, it's obviously, you walk through the building, but I'm just saying, it's a large, it's a restaurant. It's a good-sized restaurant that they have there, it's, it's nothing huge, but...
Do we have any idea what the capacity is there?
Well, I, I don't think, I'm looking, you know, looking from driving by the building and knowing they've got a restaurant on one side, a bar on the other side. I, I don't know exactly what the capacity of the place is, but my point is, you know, it's like, probably not more than 150 people if it's not.
I think, unless, probably, that, that's excessive, I think.
Yeah, because, you know, we didn't have, it's probably under 100, because we didn't have sprinkler issues there, we didn't have, so...
Yeah, I was going to say, it could be more than 100.
I've been in there, it doesn't, it's not that large.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I think persuading me by that capacity, though, that this is not an expensive item, when you think about the number of drinks that could be consumed in a, you know, it's not, I don't know, I'd certainly, I'd like to stay with Mr. Roderick's suggestion.
Yep.
I, I just feel that it is New Year's Eve, and, and, you know, regardless of the amount of people, there, there used to have a potential for an issue, and I think that, you know, behooves the town to make sure that we have, you know.
The concern I have with that, though, is, okay, you back it up an hour, why don't we have that requirement for every restaurant that's serving booze on New Year's or any other holiday?
It's the only one that has come in for 2:00. But I mean...
I don't think that adds to the risk.
No, I agree with Mr. Lambert, if we're not requiring a police officer for an establishment that's open at 1:00 AM, they're asking for one extra hour, I think they're actually doing us somewhat of a service by staying open the extra hour to allow patrons to have time from 12:00 to 2:00 before they drive. They're going to go a two-hour span, you know, before they, if you force them to leave at 1:00, they've only had one hour from the time they've stopped drinking, you know, till the time they're going to get in their vehicle. So I, I think in this case, they're asking us to do something that makes their patrons less likely to have a problem when they leave, and if, if the, if the problem's going to take place, it's going to take place while the drink is going on, you know, they need the police officer. Well, hold on, I don't agree with that, for this reason, and that is, that one reason to have a police officer there is to enforce these restrictions. And the honest system in the past has not always worked, so I see the cost as a minimal cost, and I see as a way to enforce what we are asking. I don't see it necessarily as a...
I think as long as they're informed of the restrictions, if they don't follow the restrictions, when next year comes around, they won't get the, the extended period.
I'd like to just say that, I believe, Mr. Lambert, that the fact that, Mr. Bowlin, as they're coming out, they're looking for a place to go to. If they can, if they're going to get somewhere, related to competition in another place, they're going to go to the place that's going to allow them to stay till that 2:00 to socialize. So that might be a valid point, that they're going to stay where they can sit for a couple hours with their friends after the midnight hour. So that makes kind of, it does make a little bit of sense that they're going to go to a place where they can stay till 2:00, over a place that closes at 1:00 and you have to get right out. But we still have the situation, people are going to be there drinking, so...
Yeah, but now, they've, they've obviously been open in the past, have we ever had a problem?
Nothing, nothing notable that I can recall. Not in the last five years anyhow.
I remove the question, Mr. President.
With the, the current motion here is to allow the 2:00 AM closing, with the considerations of the police chief, plus the fact that they have to have an officer for four hours.
Well, if only the officer was an amendment, we should vote on that first, shouldn't we not?
No, my, my motion was to stop serving at 1:00.
And no music after 1:00.
And no music after 1:00.
And my amendment was to add a police, police presence. Was there a second to the amendment?
No. I'll second the, I'll...
You made the amendment.
Yeah.
No, she made the motion, I made the amendment.
Yeah, I was... Well, Ms. Durfee has the right to second that, and she has, so the motion on the floor is for a 2:00 AM closing, stop serving alcohol and entertainment at 1:00 AM, and they have to have a police officer. Any further discussion?
Shouldn't we vote on the amendment first, and then vote on the main motion?
Okay, well, vote on the amendment, the addition of the police officer.
Yes, because I would like to vote in the negative on that, and...
We can do it either way, because we can bring it back up without that amendment, the amendment was tagged on. But, okay, we're going to vote on the amendment, which is to add the police officer, you know, to this, to this request. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed. Four, the motion, the amendment fails for three.
I second, I just think that vote failed, this is the amendment.
Yeah, three, four.
And that was Mr. Leonard, Mr. Costa.
Mr. Bowlin.
Opposed.
And Mr. Lambert. Okay, now we're voting on the 2:00 AM closing with the stopping of alcohol and entertainment at 1:00 AM.
And is that going to be the check with the chief or the other?
Well, yeah, with the, any restrictions the chief wishes to play, so you'll talk to him about the entertainment. The current motion on the floor, all those in favor? That motion carries seven votes. On the appointments and resignations, for the appointments to the housing authority, we still have further interviews to do, and the same with the juvenile hearing board. So we're going to continue, entertain a motion to continue those appointments...
So moved.
Till the meeting after the next round of interviews.
Did someone make the motion? I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, continue those appointments till after the next round of interviews. All those in favor? It's unanimous. And I take it, the only other thing we have here in the appointments is a resignation of Thomas Parker as a member of the harbor commission.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation with regret. Second.
We have a motion to accept the resignation with regret, been seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, people...
May I ask you a question? If I recall the letter of resignation, he did it because of some policy statement he read in our website, does anybody know what that might be about?
Yes. As, as a recently elected member of the Tivern Budget Committee, based on policy expressed in the town's website, I informed my resignation from the harbor commission.
What, what, what policy did he say?
Elected and appointed.
Elected and appointed.
By, by charter, you cannot serve as an elected and appointed position.
Was he an elected official?
Having been elected to the Tivern Budget Committee, he's resigning from the harbor committee.
Thank you.
Motion to accept with regret, all those in favor? It's unanimous. New business, Councilor Durfee, the extension of the moratorium on Bay Street area. Mindful of the fact that we have extended this moratorium for several periods of time, I will make a motion that we, once again, extend it to June 30th, 2009, and council, of course, is always free to make changes in that, if settlement or litigation somehow requires, affects it or requires us to make a change. So I will make a motion that it be further extended to June 30th, 2009.
I would second the motion.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Sorry, I just want to note for the record and for the benefit of the people out there, maybe those who are watching on TV, even though this is called a moratorium, which implies you can't do anything at all, it is not really a moratorium, it's really a set of restrictions. People with or without of the lawsuit still have the right to do certain things with their property, provided they follow the proper testing and remediation procedures. So it's not a do-nothing moratorium, it's a list of restrictions and safeguards that the town has imposed, so, thank you.
Motion is seconded to extend the moratorium till June 30th, 2009. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? It's unanimous.
Councilor Lambert? I will speak, Mr. President. My purpose in putting this in general, I have an opportunity to the implementation of the recently passed charter review provisions is just to make sure that we start the process, believe probably the next logical step. And I'm not certain about this, whether we, as the council, should have the legislation going to the General Assembly drafted... drafted at this level, or whether representative or senator should, so... But my, my main purpose is just to make sure that we keep it moving, because I know it does take a while to get through the process.
Yes, it's a fairly simple resolution, requesting our representatives in the General Assembly to submit it. We've done it a few years ago with the last round of charter changes, and could have that for you at the next meeting with the council.
Thank you, we would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilor Lambert?
My next agenda item was put forth in an attempt to set some goals for the council for the next 23 months. The first step would be whether there's any consensus that we even want to do that. It has been done in the past, and it has not been done in the past, so however you want to look at it, we have a precedent. And so, the first thing is just to get people's feelings. If there isn't a particular strong consensus to do so, then I would say we should just move on. But if there is some interest in doing it, then I would propose a method to do that that we could discuss to see if the method makes sense. So, first question is, I'd like to hear from my colleagues whether they, they feel setting a set of goals would be worthwhile. I wouldn't, I would say, for the other new members of the council, we've got 23 months left, which is a long time. However, the 23 months will go by at a very rapid pace, and that's why I think it might be helpful to set three to five high-priority goals. So, with that, I look forward to other people's views.
Mr. Lambert, my immediate reaction when I read it was that it was an excellent idea. But I'm giving some further thought, I think one major obstacle that we have is the financial meltdown that we have here in this state. I tried to put a list together of what I thought would be appropriate objectives that I'd like to see over the next two years, and I realized that unless we clarify the financial situation, it's really pie in the sky at this point. While I think the suggestion is excellent, I'd suggest holding it off until we get some clearer understanding of what's happening, at least in the General Assembly in Providence, and get some idea as to just what impact we're gonna have here financially in Tiverton.
Well, I guess that would be one of the major goals and objectives, is try to bring clarity. Well, it wouldn't necessarily have to be financial, for example, assuming that the state ever approves, finally approves the, what now, almost two-year-old, up-aid of the comprehensive plan, there are some ordinances that need to be updated, which, for the most part, don't include any financial expenditures. But your point about finances is certainly well-taken, and we're faced with a huge unknown in that area.
I think we're looking at a couple of different situations, one that moving up is, there's no doubt that we have no idea what we're gonna be able to accomplish financially until we get a clearer picture of what's happening. We do need to take a look at our zoning regulations and so forth to conform with the comprehensive plan. It would be nice to see the comprehensive plan completed, but then, I think one of the problems we're having is some of, some of the zoning we've already established is creating some agenda at the state level in terms of our comprehensive plan, you know, why we've made North Tiverton an R-30, and things like that. So, I think we're gonna have to, one of our goals is gonna have to be to get some revisions to the places where we need revisions in our ordinances and so forth. So, I think we've got two different areas of goals, ones we can't accomplish without a financial, you know, burden on the town, and there are gonna be the financial issues which are impossible to try to pinpoint where we want to go with. So, there's still the possibility of, you know, setting some un-financial, shall we say, or, you know, goals and objectives that I think we can get accomplished. The only, the only thing I would add for this is that, in the comprehensive plan itself, the very last thing is says implementation, and that's a given, I mean, that, that's not a goal. That is, they approve that, and we agree to implement it. So, I think that will follow as the day of the night. The one area that I have, and while I share, Mr. Lambert, this is not a time for major league initiatives of, of any type, there are some things that we deal with, for example, if we get a stimulus bill, and if there are, if that filters down to the local level, and we have something that we can put people to work on, it does seem to me that we should be thinking about how, and this may be pie in the sky, whether it will filter down to the local level, I do not know, but should we think about projects that, if we do get some stimulus money, and it's not just put into the general fund, which is unlikely, they're gonna put people to work, what should we think about? Well, I think, you know, in, in the meeting we had with, with Senator Whitehouse, it's obvious that those who have something, projects that's ready to go, are gonna be the ones who are gonna benefit the most. So, if there is some things like that, maybe we should spend some time in seeing if there is some, some things we can get, you know, maybe started on, even if we can't accomplish them unless it comes through, but to see if those funds become available, we're gonna be ready to take advantage of it. You know, years ago, was it the Carter administration that put through that, CETA workers? And employment at that time was 10% in the country, and we had people lined up, and I can, I can remember it, we were like 50, 60 people lined up, and we put to work. We had the funds, put them to work, they planted all the cherry trees in the north end of town. And I'm not suggesting that we plant cherry trees again, but I suspect getting together and just thinking, with our department heads, about what, what projects could we do that we would not be, we'd be unable to do, it may be the total waste of time, but at least we'd be ready. Why don't we try to assign that job to Mr. Gonzalo, and ask him at his department head meeting, to ask the department heads if there are anything like that that we can, and get back to us so that we can try to formalize some kind of a plan if it is available.
And I think, Mr. President, also, what we have to look at, I think we have to, in our goals and objectives, they have to be twofold, one has to be best-case scenario, and one has to be worst-case scenario. And I think those are the two, you know, we have to really balance them both, because to see what areas we might have to impact, should the worst happen, and what areas we can expand, should the best happen.
I think one of the things we really need to do is, we really need to have some kind of a plan on board for the industrial park, because those are some infrastructure areas, and if that's the kind of projects they're looking to, to fund, that we need to have something ready to go there. Yeah, ready to go. The other thing is, last year, we had two goal meetings. One was in January, one was in, and you look at it, and you go, well, we, but one of the things that I can remember talking about was, how do we get greater participation in recycling? And that's a, that's a problem that we have not solved, but that's the kind of thing that may not require money, but where do we go? And I know the landfill and the recycling committee are working on that, but that's the kind of thing that, you know, we did the impact fees, we, comprehensive plan has always been a problem for two years. But some things you get done without the monetary expenditure, so it's, I think, I think it's worthwhile at least discussing what we can and can put together, and some things will happen to us that we didn't plan for. Yeah, I think we're gonna, we're gonna be spending an inordinate amount of time, you know, dealing with, with shortfalls and budget issues, and I think it's gonna take up a lot of our time, at least, you know, in this coming year, as things play out, so, I don't know, anybody else got any suggestions on this? Do you want to get a list together, do we want to generate that list now, or do we want to...
I think your suggestion that the town administrator had to bound that meeting, see if he can generate some ideas there, and if we have any ideas, we can bring them back also at a next meeting or whenever. In accordance with Mrs. Hissel's suggestion, that we, we come back with something if we have something.
Yep.
That's, that's giving a good start, I think.
Well, let me just say that then we should, at least, each of us pick three or four items that we think are important, and a combination of financial and non-financial. And then I had a little further process, but I think that would be premature at the moment, so if we can just start to, to get our list together, that would be a beginning.
I think one of the top things should be survive.
It's the way things are going, is getting to be more and more difficult when you lost...
Why don't we do that, why don't we, if anybody does have anything they want to put down as a priority, get that, get that to the clerk, get that to Nancy, you know, prior to the deadline for the next council meeting, which is probably gonna be the first meeting in January, and if she has anything that has developed, she'll put it into the packet, and we can look at those, those items that anybody has, and we can see if there's enough to generate a need for further, you know, paring that down, or see how we want to divide that up.
Okay, sounds good.
Town clerk?
This is copy of the schedule. We're just, if the secretary's case, we're just to confirm that. We reserve the fifth... The last policy of the last council was that, every month with five Mondays, we would hold it for workshop, and then throughout your other meetings, if you started to say, oh, we workshop, then we would actually have the workshop, if not, it's just holding the date.
Okay. Anybody have any issues with the, the proposed meeting scheduled for 2009?
Mr. President? There is one issue, September 28th is the Jewish holiday of Yom Kippur, one of the holiest days of the year. Might make sense to move that to Tuesday.
Councilor, what's your question?
I would certainly think we could accommodate that holiday as we accommodate others, and...
Move the meeting Tuesday to 29th?
And adopt it as our working schedule for 2009.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the, the meeting scheduled for 2009 with the changes noted, September 28th will be changed to Tuesday, September 29th. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Now, the next decision is the December 22nd meeting. Should we have it, or should we cancel that meeting?
Well, Mr. President, only if you are planning to have a big party for us.
Well, seeing I'm not, then I make that suggestion as to cancel it.
I would make a motion that we cancel the December 22nd, 2008 town council, Tiverton Town Council meeting.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second to cancel the 22nd meeting. We have the ability, if something comes up and there's a major problem, to call a special meeting, so we'll see. Do we have any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Well, it looks like everybody wants the night off. Are you, are you against?
Yeah, you know what? You know what, no.
You can tell me what. Town Administrator announcements, comments, and questions?
I just have a few. The revaluation process, we have assessors going around the town, taking pictures of all the homes. We just want to alert the public that they don't have to be home for that, and if they see someone taking pictures of their home, it's probably the assessor, and it's no problem at all. The second thing is, I'd like to thank the Tiverton Garden Club for donating and all the REITs that are on the town buildings. And the last item I have is, I'm trying to schedule a meeting for next Monday, here at the town hall at 7:00 p.m., with the council, the school department, and the budget committee. If there's any objection to that, maybe you could let me know now. This is a meeting that everyone has wanted, it's coming to pass.
We just gonna, are we gonna talk philosophy, or, well, not anything, you know, prepared for the budget?
At the council's request, where we have three things to put on the agenda, that would be budget strategy, negotiated contracts, and the third one was...
Disposal of property. Disposal of property.
Disposal of property, correct, the two schools.
Anybody have an objection to that? I think that we should schedule that meeting, we, we, we need to get that meeting as, as soon as possible, get the three groups together, and...
December 22nd.
What's that?
It sounds like December 22nd.
We could put it back to that. With no one having an objection, then we're gonna be, it's a joint meeting.
Right, and I will ask the town clerk to post the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalo, I have one question, in the case of where folks are going around taking photos, do these folks have IDs, town issued identification, in case somebody is...
They have IDs, they're not necessarily town issued.
But some sort of ID, so if somebody is uneasy, they can ask to see proof of who they are and what they're doing.
They do have, they do have IDs.
Okay, thank you.
Those are the pictures they're taking, I think they're taking from the roadway.
From the distance.
Yeah, they just see people in the neighborhood, taking pictures of every house.
And, and the college, we have to register.
Council announcement, comments, and questions?
Yes, Mr. President, I just have one. I'd like to take this time to recognize the Tiverton High School Tiger football team, who well represented the town last night at the Super Bowl at Cranston Stadium. Unfortunately, they didn't come out as the victors, however, they'd had an excellent, non-defeated season. And it's not easy to get to the Super Bowl, you know, these guys have to play with their heart, their mind, and their body, and it just takes a lot, so they had an undefeated season, and they did an excellent job in representing the town, and I'd just like to congratulate them, thank you.
Was Mrs. Black there?
Yes. And Mrs. Paul Carroll, and many other people in the town.
Town solicitor, announcements, comments, and questions?
You just have one memo there from me in the packet, this concerns the litigation, which is against the 34, the cities and towns in Rhode Island, from Narragansett Electric Company as to the mechanism of taxation. Fortunately, Tiverton is one of the towns that, at least according to Narragansett, has been doing it right, we've been following the law, we're still part of it. The trust, the inter-local trust, has, surprise, surprise, denied any liability or any responsibility to defend. But I say surprise, but in reality, it's not surprising, the policies don't cover tax assessment issues and never have. They did, however, offer to have Attorney Mark Dacisto coordinate the legal defense, and hire experts and so forth, but that's really more for the towns that have been doing it wrong, or at least alleged to have done it wrong, that need to fight it. As other towns that we represent are in the same boat as Tiverton that are alleged to be doing it right, and just therefore injunctive, we'll be representing the towns concurrently on this issue and following it, and we should be able to keep the costs down considerably by splitting them among the towns.
That's because we have good legal representation, good legal advice.
Thank you. You know, sometimes I do wonder what the inter-local trust ensures. You know, every time...
Have more time, this guy's a head dear.
I can think of three instances where they have denied coverage to the town. What's our premium that we pay them, Jim?
What's our premium that we pay them, Jim?
Off the top of my head, I believe it's $155,000.
Yeah, well, again, rail on slip and fall cases. I mean, that seems to be the vétno. But beyond that, it's really, yeah, I mean, beyond that, you really wonder what in the world they do do to protect the citizen. That's just a race of frustration.
If I had my choice, I'd file a countersnope against the John Danne Killin' Companies.
Okay. Okay. Now, time for executive session matters.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session under 4246-5, subsection A, subsection 2.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
And continue therein, under 4246-5A5.
Possible acquisition.
Yes, possible acquisition or disposition of town-held property.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
And to remain and talk about pursuant to 4246-5A2, collective bargaining with Asme.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor? Unanimous. For now, an executive session.